I'd like to call to order the Select Board meeting for Monday, February 3, 2020. We, I will hold off on introducing everybody, but for right now, we are going to just reconvene. Later, we're going to go downstairs and have an interview for a position for the Historic District Commission. Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, wait one second. I just want to-
There's always a lot to talk about in the election world.
I meant to do this today. One minute. Just give me a second. I'm getting something. Talk is fast on my computer. I am, see? That's what's happening. I've heard nothing yet. I haven't heard anything official. Okay, I will call the meeting back to order for the Select Board meeting for Monday, February 3, and this time I will introduce everybody. On my right is Anne Sherman, Molly Cowan, who is our Vice Chair. I'm Kathy Corson, the Chair, Nico Papenkostinis, Clerk-
Good evening.
Julie Gilman, Select Board, and Russell Dean is our Town Manager, and Joanna Bartella is our Recording Secretary. We did have a Board interview, and now I would open it up for public comment. Is anybody here for public comment?
Good evening. I'm Anna Chair. Mark Donovan, Wayside Drive, Exeter. I'm actually here with one of my neighbors. And first off, I just wanted to thank the Board and the Town Manager for all your efforts. I don't think you guys probably get enough praise, but you know, it's a, it's a difficult job and really appreciate just your service to the town. So I wanted to submit to public record. I had created a petition for, it's basically commenting on Article 4, which is the Park and Rec Expansion Plan. And I had initially gone and collected signatures and was hoping to turn it in on January 21, when you had the bond meeting. Unfortunately, I was traveling, so I thought because I had it signed and notarized, I felt that it was important for me to just do it kind of myself and hand it in. And I think Select Board, Papakas, Nissis, or Nico-
Nico's got it.
-had, had really kind of helped this effort in the fact that what this petition is about, and I can certainly read it real quick if that is-
Sure.
Please do.
But it was really, I think, Nico's efforts, I think, kind of, to some extent, kind of mitigated this because this was in reference to the parking and public access on Wayside Drive and Fuller Lane as part of that project. And I know that that's since been voted to be taken off of Article 4. But I really was hoping to put it into the public record because I know that your Board positions turnover, folks on the Park and Rec Advisory, as well as the Park and Rec Department, those folks change. And just to put something kind of in the, in the public record about kind of the feedback from our neighborhood. So just quickly to read the petition. It's, "We, the undersigned legal voters of the Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, are residents of Wayside Drive and Fuller Lane. We respectfully petition to change the scope of the Exeter Park and Rec renovation slash expansion, expansion proposal to eliminate the addition of a parking lot on the northeast corner of the Rec Park." That's Tax Map 69, Lot 4. "Including eliminating the proposed public access via Fuller Lane. Collectively, we do not want the quality of our life negatively impacted by the constant flow of traffic traversing our quiet neighborhood in search of an ancillary parking lot. This petition will be provided to the Select Board on January 21, 2020, at the Bond and Budget Meeting, where the Board will either approve or reject the ERPD proposal for inclusion as an article in the 2020 ballot." So while this has 31 signatures on it, what it specifically called out, and I wasn't very, because I work and I've got kids and stuff on the weekends, and I had neighbors helping go with me, but it doesn't capture every individual, but what it does is it captures every single home on both Wayside and Fuller, signed by their legal voters. So I just wanted to submit that to the record.
Thank you. Yeah. Take that. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Alrighty. Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Next is Proclamations and Recognitions. I just wanted to recognize, I had gone to Cobham Industries, which is on Continental Drive, and I was invited there to, they had one of their, they are a vendor for the Orion Project. And I don't know if anybody knows what the Orion Project is, but it's a new NASA spacecraft for astronauts. And it is a, an important part of NASA's Artemis Project that includes sending the first woman and the next man to the moon in 2024. So what does that have to do with Exeter? Well, Cobham is actually building cables that are on this spaceship. And so Lockheed was there to recognize them and to give them a banner that says, you know, it had the Orion, the ship, and this banner says, "Parts made in Ex-" I can't remember exactly what it said, but "Parts made in Exeter." And all the people that work on it sign the banner, and the banner is put where, when the first spaceship goes off, that banner is hanging. And what Lockheed has done is that every state in the Union is represented by, in, has actually built a part that's on this ship. So I was totally mesmerized by it. And I got my picture taken with a banner. Pretty exciting. And one of the things they did give me is they gave me some Artemis pins that I got for all the Select Board, and I wanted to give it to everybody. And one for you, Russ.
Thank you.
So, but what, you don't know about what happens in Exeter without a little exploration, and I was very pleased. So when I do get the picture, and they did take a picture of all the people that have worked on it in front of the, in front of the banner, I'll make sure that that's put on our website so that we can celebrate their successes. So.
Thank you.
All right, so we will move on to our minutes. We have two sets of minutes. We have January 6, which is because we had that meeting that went a little bit longer than usual. So does anybody have any changes or anything they'd like to add, add or change?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Select Board meeting minutes of January 6, 2020.
Second. Any other? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, then we have the minutes of the 21st, which are very long. Anybody have anything there?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Select Board meeting minutes of January 21, 2020.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Next, we have appointments, and we did have, Julie, do you want to make a motion for the appointments for the Historic District? I don't know what, what is the, is for two years?
Twenty-two would be the term.
Twenty-two, 2022? Okay.
Sure. Madam Chair, I move to appoint Duncan Douglas McCallum to the Historic District Commission for a term to end April 30, 2022.
Second.
As a voting member.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Next, deliberative session updates. Russ?
So this is here just in the event that there were amendments to Articles on Saturday that the Board wanted to reconsider any recommendations based on Articles that were amended, but I think only one was, and I think it was fairly ministerial, so.
Oh, yeah.
That's really-
That was the Citizens' Petition, that was? Right.
I believe that was the only amendment of the day.
Okay.
Ultimately. So there's really nothing-
Okay.
-to ponder.
All right, we have, okay.
That's done. Moving right along.
Yep, we're gonna be out of here. If Paul can, and Andy can be really quick, then we could-
Don't, I know, Kathy, don't-
Paul looks like he has a lot to say, nowhere to go.
Yeah. All right, so we'll move on to the 2019 Election Law Changes.
That would be you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm Paul Scafidi, Tom Moderator. I was just telling Andy, you guys all know, when I was Selectman back in the days, as they say, I never would have fathomed looking up at the Board, seeing Bucky Rowe, Paul Burnett, or anybody with computers in. We just sat there with pens going, "What are you gonna do while they're talking? Doodle." Watching you guys, it's, it's interesting. Anyway, I'm here to thank you, first of all, everybody, for Saturday. I think it went pretty well. But the real reason is, it's that time of year where we gotta talk about Election Day itself, what's gonna happen, what's going on, and how we're gonna do it. All the changes that are happening from the state really don't affect how we're doing things any different than we have in the past. I want everybody to be aware out there that the new rules are still in effect of, you have to have some form of ID to check in. If you don't have an ID, you will be signing an affidavit, or somebody there, like the Board, or one of us, if we know you and can vouch that you're a citizen of the town, that also allows you to vote. But when we ask for those things, we're not doing it because we think it's a great idea. The state has mandated that we have to do these things. So we want everybody to be aware that that's still happening. Parking-wise, if you are gonna be there, and this is not to you, the Board, but to the, the public in general, if you're gonna be there working for a candidate or something else, you're not allowed, we don't want you to park at the, in what we call the upper parking lot by the fields. Please park your car down in the backside. The upper parking lot specifically is for the voters. And we're anticipating quite a crowd on Tuesday next week for the primary. I don't know what you're anticipating, but when you have over 13,000 registered voters, if we get 60% of them, we're still talking 7,500 people here. So we need all the parking spaces we can get. If you're handicapped, there is a handicap exit where we are, as well as over in the front side of the SST, and we can help in any way possible to do that. You are not allowed to bring in any articles that have anything to do with politicalizing your candidate. You can't wear a button, you can't wear a hat, you can't wear a sticker, you can't wear a T-shirt. If you do wear it, you can only wear it up to when you go up to the steps and go through the glass doors. That is what we consider, you're in the neighborhood of the, of the ballots, I mean, of the booths. And we real, you can walk up to the doorway to get into the Talbot Gym, but if you remove it before there, you won't get hassled. And when we say hassled, we're really gonna ask you to please take it off. Cover it up. If you have a jacket, cover the T-shirt or whatever. We have to do that. State mandates that we have to do that. So it's not something, again, that we're trying to push and make people upset, "Oh, why can't I wear this?" It's against the law. There's an RSA that says you cannot do this. So please be aware of that. The way the voting booths are set up, the way the lines are set up, these are all state guidelines that we use. When people come in, they have to follow the rules and regulations of where they go and how they get there. Once you go into the ballot, into the booth to vote, you have to put the ballot in the box and leave. You can't hang around and talk. We, everybody likes to. It's a great place to meet friends, people you haven't seen all year long. I, I like to do it as well. I see people, you can stay to the left side before you go into the booths, but once you put that ballot in the box, you have to get out. There will be a spot if you're waiting for your ride, or your dad, or your mom, or, you know, they're still in the booth, and you gotta wait for them. We have a spot for that, but other than that, we have to enforce it. You can't be hanging around. It's great to talk, but that's another thing that you can't do anymore. One, if you have a problem with a ballot, it's best to come and talk to one of the clerks. Andy or myself will get you a new ballot. We'll take the old one. We'll write on it that it's invalid, give you a new one. There's nothing, no problems getting another one, as long as you don't try to put both in at the same time. That's, yeah, well, we've seen them do it. "I got two. What do you want me to do with them?" "Well, you gotta give me one of them." So those are the types of things we want people to be aware of. The weather's supposed to be decent right now. There shouldn't be a big problem like we've had in the past, especially during March when we've had a shutdown. If there is a problem, it's my call to make it Monday night to do that. I'm not worried about it. You know, it should go off without too big a problem. Anything else, Andy, that? You know, we just, we want it to go smooth and easy. That's, that's the biggest thing. When you're having that many people come in to vote, and it's not gonna be long, you're only voting for one name either way. This isn't a big, you know, sitting there for 20 minutes writing everything down. We still want it to go smooth, and we still want it to move along. So, and, and help us by helping the ballot clerks. They're there for a long day. Don't give them a problem, you know. We're asking people to just, you know, if they say you have to do something, if there's a question, just ask for me or ask for Andy. We'll come over and get it squared away. So, Julie, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wondered if you could, I don't know if Andy wants to do this, remind people that it's same-day registration.
Right, I was gonna let her.
Okay, then I'll wait. My other question was about changing yourself back to an unenrolled-
You wanna do that? That's your, no.
On your way out, there'll be a table for-
Undeclared voters, right. And that's, that's another thing. What happens every year invariably, someone will come in, well, lots of people come in and say, "I want a Republican ballot." They give us their name, we say, "Sorry, you're a registered Democrat." "I've never voted Democrat in my life." Well, you voted Democrat sometime. And unless you go back to the town and change it, you're still a registered Democrat or a registered Republican either way. And that's the ballot you're gonna get on Tuesday, correct?
Correct.
You can't say, "Well, I don't want that one. I wanted," if you're a registered Republican, that's what you get on Tuesday is Republican ballot, even if you want to vote. You can write it in as, "Well, I'll write it in." Well, you can write it in. It's not gonna count, to be honest. Everybody thinks, you know, "I'll write in, you know, Joe Biden, it'll, it'll get on." No, you're writing Joe Biden, you're voting Joe Biden Republican. That's where it boils down to. So be aware of that. There's a lot of people that come in and say, you know, "They fight us, they fight the poor ballot clerks on this. I've never voted Democratic in my life. What are you giving me?"
You did at some other primary. You did at some other primary.
Yeah, you gotta go see the checklist supervisor at some point, because once you do it, this, that's the difference with the primary. Primary, you have to declare. It's not like the general election where everybody comes in and votes the same ballot. In the primary, there's a reason you're doing what you're doing, so. Other than that, I think it'll go easy. We've got our part of it down. We still need some ballot clerks if we can get them.
Down to one.
We need one more ballot clerk if we can get them. So, that'll be good.
What time do you need us there?
We open at 7:00 and close at 8:00.
So, should we be there at 6:30?
We'll take whatever you guys can give us. It's, you know, technically by RSA statutes, your Selectman is supposed to be there all day.
Right.
But we don't do that, you know, we just, if you can't be...
I feel like I've done that.
Oh, yeah, you've done that. If you can't be there for the day, it's your responsibility to get someone to take your place.
Right.
You know, we can if you can't. But technically, you're the ones that are supposed to find somebody to do it, so. I think we're all set on our end. Everybody, you know, that we get back really has been on top of it. Vicky's coming back, the supervisor, she knows her stuff. We're sure the state will pop down at some point to look at everything.
Oh, yeah.
And then they usually help out. The poll, oh, yeah, poll watchers. You gonna ask that?
Well, yeah, I was gonna talk about poll watchers. We've done really well with the, how we've arranged the voting area. That's, you know, what the state has told us to do, and it works fantastically.
Yeah.
But I was gonna ask about, we've also done really well with the signage outside, directing people where to vote and where not to go. But we have so many different campaigns this year, and I can, I know I can coordinate two of them to, as to where to appropriate place for a long time, electioneers to park. So, can we get a sign, like campaign workers, this way?
Yeah, we'll talk to DPW about it, yeah, see if we can do that. The other thing is, someone will be out there at 6:30, because out on the lawn, there'll be 50 signs, and you cannot put a sign up on public property. It's, you just can't do it. But they'll put them up, and then I start taking them down, and they yell at me, "Why haven't you taken down his yet? Why haven't you taken down hers yet?" And, "Gimme time, I'm getting to them all, but I can only carry so many." And the problem is, we have to get rid of them, because they never come back for them.
Right.
You know, we have 50 signs that we're throwing out in the sticks and the wires and everything else. So, keep, if you can keep them off, I may even put somebody out there on a permanent basis for the first hour, to just tell people, "Don't do it." But, yeah, we'll, we'll do something about moving the people down, getting their vehicles out of there. I know they like to park with the big signs on their vehicles and all that, but we need the parking spaces. Pun? For the voters, because the school, they're closed again, aren't they?
I think so, but I'm not sure.
They better be. They better be.
Well, the SST has been doing it lately.
Right.
And it's really helped out.
Right.
I'm sure it's helped them as well, because the kids trying to get in and out of there is just crazy. And everybody's gotta remember, stay within the guidelines in the doorways you're coming through. I'll make sure I enforce that like I, like I always do, just because you're not supposed to harass the voters as they walk by. Yeah, I think it's gonna be a fun day.
Just one quick thing, and you may have already covered it. A lot of the times, I remember the, when the line would form for the folks that were switching back, that line would then back up into where the people were voting. I think we fixed it, but just FYI.
Yeah, what we do is we move the tables now towards where they come in.
Yeah.
And so, we can even snake them if we have to snake them, right? Because, yeah, it becomes a mess.
Right, they start backing up into where the people are trying to...
And we got the new, one new machine, not new machine, but it's been upgraded.
Oh, you did? I was gonna ask.
Yeah, and so that's gonna help move things faster. We had one machine that's just...
That didn't like this.
It's tired.
Yeah.
All our machines are tired.
Right.
And the state isn't gonna give us any guideline till after 2020, which doesn't make any sense at all, but...
Yeah, there's a lot of that up there.
They're gonna be expensive when they come out.
But these are tamper-proof, which is good.
Yeah, but they're gonna, they're gonna set us back for three machines, 20 grand?
I think it was 18 to 20... 18 to 23, maybe?
Yeah, so they're gonna, and we have to do it.
Right.
But it'll make things faster, it'll help for the handicap voters, voters to make them work easier, so everybody has a secret ballot.
That was a question that I had, because later on in our packet is a a letter or an email from visually impaired people. And I assume you got that as well. So, are you all set with that? Have you worked with them?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to get this. Mr. Dean knows, we've been doing this now for about two years.
Right.
And the state's finally getting involved in it. We had issues with it because the one we were trying to do ourselves, it just would not say people, "Nico, you'd have a great time the way that machine would say your name." It killed my name, so I can imagine what it did to your name. Plus, it doesn't do well with numbers.
Oh.
You know, for the town stuff, you know, and you have to have it... But all the new voting machines have that in there. When we went up last year in Sarum and Concord, those things were impressive.
Oh, good.
Very impressive, and it's all push-button and touchscreen, I mean, and so forth. So, we're getting there when it comes to the visually impaired and the hearing impaired, to get them so people can make it move along. But next year, '21, will be the year supposedly that the state's gonna go ahead and do it, so. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a question for the town clerk, actually. We've gone through at the state a couple of different versions of residency and domicile definitions that went to court. Has that changed since the last time we had a primary?
If you cannot prove domicile citizenship or identity, there is an affidavit for each one.
Okay.
So, if you don't have it with you, you'll be signing an affidavit. So, it's not gonna prevent anybody from voting.
Okay, good.
Anybody else?
I'm trying to fix it.
All right.
Thank you.
We're ready.
Thanks.
Yeah, that, one last thing, because that's what the state is trying to do with all this, is they're making sure that everybody votes the day they come in to vote. They're not trying to prohibit anybody from voting, and that's where the affidavits will all be coming in, so. If you do sign an affidavit, realize, if you sign it fraudulently, the state is gonna start picking and looking at all these, especially if you have 30 affidavits and 40 affidavits in one town. They're gonna start looking at these affidavits, and you may be called in question about your, where you live and where you don't live, so.
We, in the last budget that the state passed, was four new positions for the Attorney General's office to deal with that.
Yeah, yeah, if they're gonna make you sign them, they gotta start checking to see if I can sign it. Doesn't mean I live here. All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate all your hard work.
See you all Tuesday.
Yes, indeed.
We'll be hanging out. Very busy. Okay, coffee, anything else? Will you have lunch for us too, and dinner, or just lunch? Just lunch? Not dinner? No, you're not bringing, you're not buying us anything? Okay. Okay.
It's not in Paul's pay grade. It's not in your pay grade.
Okay. I'll bring some, yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Bye-bye.
Alrighty, so our next thing is the Hampton Sewer Agreement.
Okay. So, the long-awaited agreement with Hampton.
This is like a two-year wait?
You probably remember seeing this before and signing off on it before. And this is actually, when it went up to the AG, they bounced it back. So, we had to go through yet one more process, which took a while with this. And we now have the blessing of all of the, all of the agencies that are required to make this happen, including the Attorney General, which the, there's a notice in here from the Attorney General, and also from the DES. So, this is actually now ready to go. And in terms of the details of the agreement, we, it, it's actually nice to see it upgraded like this, because we were able to do a deep dive into all of the different properties that are part of this. I think the Board probably remembers that from the last time we talked about it. And this agreement is revocable by the, by the Boards of Hampton or Exeter at the discretion of the Boards, if you find it becomes unduly burdensome on either, on either Board, Exeter or Hampton. And then the provision in it is just that if it's to be terminated by Exeter, that Hampton is given a reasonable time to find other, other alternatives for their sewer, sewage disposal. So, there's also appropriate things in here that allow us to update our rates and then just send them notice of that. So, it's not a, it's not an unduly burdensome activity to do that. And just some restrictions on it that indicate, you know, what, what is there is the only, are the only properties that are involved in the agreement. And there's no, there's no other additional properties that would be allowed to be added to this unless the Exeter Board took action to agree to it. So, we think it's in good shape for you to approve and sign and put on the file, so we have it updated.
And I even think, Nico, you might have not been here. Did you, were you here for this before?
Yes, it was the year before, right, yeah.
I just have one quick question too. It's because of the deep dive, it probably got done, so. Since 1969, no other properties have actually been added to it, I assume? Is that was part of like, but was audited, so they've, over all this time, they figured out what was actually... Nothing's changed, I guess, is...
Right. I, I don't know if it's since 69, 85 was the last time I think it was updated, so.
Okay, 'cause I just went back to the original date, which...
Yeah. So, this is, but all of the properties that are part of the agreement are listed on this piece. And the map is, is becoming part of the agreement too, so it's, it's quite a bit more detailed than the, than the last one was.
Lot of work, really. Good job.
So, and thanks to Public Works and Water Sewer, they really worked on this too to... There were a couple of quirky things that they ferreted out in terms of connections, like the conversion of 752 Exeter Road, that was converted to a water sewer account, the same as Exeter Residence. It was actually on our side of the, I think it was on our side of the border, but we identified it in the agreement and the terms that went with it, just to make sure that everything was documented.
So, what we need is a motion to approve this agreement between the Town of Hampton and the Town of Exeter for re-treatment and disposal of wastewater, is that correct?
With a date. With a date.
Right.
With a date, and then we make sure that we all sign it tonight. So, do you wanna do that, Julie?
I will, once I get to the right place, so I can read them first.
I just went down to the...
I get it.
Okay.
I move to sign the agreement between the Town of Hampton and the Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, re-treatment and disposal of wastewater dated Jan, February 3rd, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Great, that was good. Now, we have, Nico, you, we have some tax abatements. We haven't had those in a couple of meetings, so you've got some work here. You can group the 500s.
I was gonna say, it's permissible to group them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so you can group those, and then you have two that are...
Right, okay. So, I move to approve veterans' credits in the amount of $500 for the following map lots and units. Need to make this bigger.
You haven't gotten those glasses yet.
Map 80, lot 6, unit 43. Map 87, lot 14, unit 13A. Map 54, lot 4, unit 39. Map 70, lot 61, unit 8. Map 19, lot 16, unit 6. Map 95, lot 64, unit 247. Map 18, lot 6. Map 87, lot 14, unit 14A. Map 19, lot 16, unit 9. And map 35, unit 12.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
I move to approve a veteran's credit in the amount of $1,000 for map 69, lot 3, unit 26.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Finally, yeah, I move, I move to deny veterans' credit for map 95. I beg your pardon, I beg your pardon. I move to deny a veteran's credit for lot 72. Map 72, lot 65, unit 4.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Okay, then we have tax abatement. I move to approve tax abatement, tax abatements for map 110, lot 2, unit 77, for the following amounts in years respectively. $139.42 for year 2015. $112.92 for the year 2016. $101.32 for the year 2017. And $76.74 for the year 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Next, we are on to permits and approvals, and I don't believe we have any. So, we're now, unless you have anything, Russ, that's come up? Nope. Correspondents, oh, sorry. Town managers report. Sorry.
So, a couple of things. One, just to let the Board know, we do have two new employees in our highway department. Robert Vaselli and Nathan Cabral, and both have started, so that's good news for them. I know DPW has had some openings, mechanics position as well, and they're working diligently to fill those. And we also had a retirement, Mickey Burrow in the dispatch retired. Actually, last week was her, I wasn't able to attend, but we did have some people there to wish her well on her last shift. She spent 17 years with us, so we, we wish her well was her time. She had decided to go, and, and so she has retired from the town. And then I was able to attend Sergeant Jeff Butts's retirement on January 24th over at the Police Department. And Jeff was a great employee for us, spent a lot of years with us, and, and well-liked and well-regarded, so his family was there, and we wish him the best, too. So, things keep changing. And we had a conference call with the Army Corps last week, having to do with a channel issue in where our town dock is. If you remember, we had a, we had an engineering update of that, and then actually the Army Corps reached out to us and told us that we needed to meet with them, talk with them about our dock sort of going into that channel. So, we had about an hour conference call with them last week. Things seemed to go pretty well with that. They are going to look at, because basically the dock down at Stewart Park is literally like right on the line of the turnaround channel. So, they're gonna work to see if, just double-check if we actually need to do anything, because that was one of the discussion points, since it was so close. And we did have both Senators' offices involved with that and Congressman Pappas, so they were both, their offices were very responsive and are helping us along with that, so we'll keep you posted if we need to, if we need to do anything more formal. They were great, great in responding. We also met with Newmarket last week just to talk about the new EPA permit. We're both, as you know, we both have the Administrative Order of Consent, very same language, and we're looking to share resources on the new permit, so. As far as our environmental council, who that would be. And so, we're having those discussions, and then we're also attending a meeting about it tomorrow. And I think at this stage, we're just learning more about it and what it means. I know we are compliant, so that's good news. Like Jennifer always warns me, we are today, but maybe five years from now, we may be looking at something different. But anyway, so we are continuing that process, and there's more to come on that. And we are working on the town reports, so just a reminder for everybody that whether it's a Board Committee or Commission, if you're sitting on and you wanna just double-check, we could use all the help in kind of herding the committees along and making sure that they, they're all submitting their town reports to us. And Pam's been working diligently on that, that front. And then just looking ahead, the Chamber of Commerce has their economic forecast this Wednesday. It's at Exeter Inn. Wednesday, it's at Exeter Inn, and if anybody's interested in that, just let us know. It does tend to fill up, it usually fills up late, but it does fill up, and it's usually a good bellwether of the local economy and sort of what's going on in the state as well. So, if anybody's interested in that, just let, let us know, and we can, we can get you signed up for that. And then I mentioned, I did mention off the air earlier tonight, there are a couple of bills that were, we've been asked to weigh in on, one is the local option fee, that bill is on the table to increase from $5 to $10, that local discretion, and that's been one that's been out there for a while, and the bill is being heard again on Wednesday of this week in Concord. And then there is a bill that would not allow the regulating of any kind of short-term rentals, and that's caught the ear of, of the NHMA, they've been looking at that, and the issues around that. So, they have asked that Exeter give its version of events this Wednesday if we're available, so we have that. And then the last thing on my list is just for anyone who's interested, a reminder that the Cooperative Deliberative Session is this Thursday night at 7:00. So, if you know anybody who's interested in the co-op budget and wants to go down and spend the night with some of our neighboring towns, a little bit different than our town deliberative session, feel free, and it's Thursday night. And I think the local school district, the Lincoln and Main Street Schools, is tomorrow night at 6:30 in the Lincoln Street School Library. That's really all I had.
Great. Julie, do you have anything?
I have, this is the time of year that I am in Concord pretty much for three days a week, and everybody holds their meetings here on those days. So, I've missed a few meetings, but I would like to follow up on what Mr. Dean was talking about, those bills that he's talking about are in my committee, so he can get a double ding. I know, that's it.
Nico?
I missed the Facilities Committee meeting on January 31st, 'cause I had a work commitment, was unable to go to that. The Planning Board met on January 23rd, and it was a busy night. We had a continued public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments that we saw in the 2020 Town Meeting Warrant. We heard more on the Linden Street case and continued that to next month. Also continued the Brentwood Road, Spruce Street case till next month, and then finally approved site plan review for Two Meeting Place Drive, the Great Bridge property, which will be a multi-use development.
Great. Molly?
I don't have anything.
And nothing to report, E911 meets tomorrow morning, I'll be there.
I missed the Swayze Parkway Trustees Meeting and River Advisory Meeting, but I did attend the Communications Committee, and we are going to do the same thing that we did last year, which is work with the newspaper to just get an article each Friday after the, we decided to do that after the primary, because no one, no one's gonna be geared up for it, so we'll have three, I think it was three or four Fridays that there will be, we're gonna do it in chronological order, but we're gonna start from the end and, and finish with the bond articles at the last. And basically, all we do is what Russ wrote down for the deliberative session, but in a newspaper form, so it's, it's just being, it's just informing the voters what each article is, and I think that helped last year, just to get citizens more informed, and once we do that, we'll also put it out on, you know, the town. We'll make sure that it gets out in social media as well, 'cause doesn't, I don't know how many people read the paper, to be honest, but, and we are meeting tomorrow morning.
I enjoy the paper.
I, I enjoy the paper, and I think it's an important, it's a really important thing to have and to support.
It's funny that you say that, because one of the bills that we're hearing tomorrow is about the difficulty when all these small papers are holding, of fulfilling the notice requirements that we have to do for planning or public hearings, and trying to find a solution for that.
Yeah, it's really scary, you know? And people say they're not informed, but, you know, what are you supposed to do? I, you know, it's really, it's really tough, so. All right, so that's it, we'll go to Correspondents. Let's see, we have, the Energy Committee gave us a, let's see, oh, they are supporting the town warrant against the Granite Bridge Pipeline, and I believe that they spoke at the deliberative session on that. Also, there's the 2020 CEDS Visioning Sessions, which is done by the Rockingham Economic Development Corporation, and they are at different towns, we've missed.
The Stone Church.
Huh?
The Stone Church.
The Stone Church, there's one at the Galley Hatch tomorrow night, there's one in Derry, the Stone Church on Monday, and there's one in Nashua on, that's interesting, Nashua isn't in Rockingham County, why is it in Nashua?
The Regional Economic Development.
It's regional, I'm sorry, I was thinking it's Rockingham, did they change their name? 'Cause wasn't it?
No, it's both.
There is one, okay.
Yeah, it's sort of southern New Hampshire.
Gotcha, thank you, thank you for clarifying that. Then we have our Xfinity, Russ, you can tell us about, it's the new, it's just a change of, of.
That's one of them.
Changes, TV changes?
Changes in channel lineups and things like that, that they're required to let us know about, and also, they have an annual customer notice that they're required to put out, which describes their payment procedures, privacy policy, and billing dispute and complaint procedures, so that is also in the packet for people to read and be aware of.
Great. Okay, and I'm still scrolling down to the next. It is a long packet of information, okay, and then the, the other one is, the, several voters sent us an email, and I had referenced it when Andy and Paul were here, about the vision impaired voting, and they have said that they are working on that, and you are too, Russ?
Yes.
And then this is about, is this about the logging? The, this was the one that I talked about, or is this?
Yes.
It's in reference to that one that I asked you about, and I noticed that you had talked to Kristen about issue, they've had issues with this?
So, I will actually get a revised update of this, because you can see that the, the question came up when the board was dealing with this as an intent to cut, which you really can't not sign, because of the state law that requires you to, to put it in play, but they have, as a result of looking at this at the state level, they've basically, you can see that it dates back, and I'll have to check, this is dated actually 2018 to the, to the logger, that there's no work to be done until a waiver request is submitted to DES and a permit's issued for work on this property. So, we are in the, we are staying in tune to this, and I will get the board an update on it, but basically, it says right in here that the proposed crossings are located municipally designated prime wetlands. So, that requires the submittable waiver request in addition to the Wetlands Forestry Notification, and so, you know, they've, it, it seems like at least at one time, this was already maybe disqualified or had a particular issue with it. And the question the board had the last time we talked about this was, is there anything, you know, if that happens, what is the process? And this really spells it out, I think, pretty good, is that the DES compliance people take a look at it, and they will not allow it to go forward if it, if it violates the Wetlands Protection Act provisions.
Is this about a property that crosses town borders?
Yeah, it, it was a landlocked piece that I think they were going in through either, I think it was in Kensington and Hampton Falls.
Yeah.
And, 'cause they couldn't have gone through, they'd have to go over town land, and it would be in prime wetlands through our town land, so.
So, I need a map of this myself, so I will get one for the, for the board and put a, put a definitive map around this particular piece, so we can keep an eye on it from here till whenever this process ends, if they're applying for the waiver and they get it. But again, this is one of those where the laws are sort of in conflict, basically, you don't really have the choice to sign off on an intent to cut, but clearly, as part of the process, they do review those wetlands issues, and, and they will put the brakes on if there is a particular problem with it, so.
Okay. All right, next is, Mitchell Group is increasing their $10, by $10 an hour, their rate to the town. Then the other one is, the American Independence Museum is thanking us for our support of $250. And then the Parks and Rec DES permit, is that the alteration of terrain permit?
Correct.
And that's it. So, as far as reviewing the board calendar, next time, I would like to get, bring back the property use fees for next time, so that's the eight, it will be, I'm sorry, it will be the, we, I did send out a thing, it will be a Tuesday, because the 17th is President's Day, it's a national holiday, so if everybody is, the 18th, okay? For everybody? So, we'll have the 18th. So, that will be, we, I know that Ann and Nico worked on that before, so if you, we, if you can remember what we discussed at the last one, then we can come back, and I'll make sure, too, that, I know there's a few people we've had that want to discuss these fees, too, and I would hope that you would incorporate, when you talk to Greg and Melissa, I'm assuming, that you'll incorporate, there was that, there were a couple of, oh, the Seabreeze.
Yeah, that was.
And then the, a, was, so just, if you could talk about that preliminarily, and then we can discuss it, but would love to, like, have some, you know, just, you have a discussion before, so that we are, have some kind of guidelines. And then after that, the next meeting would be the 3rd, and then after that, you can do whatever you want. Probably the 7, and I'm sorry, it would be the 2nd, and then it would probably be the 16th after that.
Madam Chair, I have a question, there's been a lot of discussion on various media, social media type things about what we can and can't recycle, and how, so I was wondering if we couldn't have a little lesson from Public Works.
That would be great.
With examples of what can and can't be done.
So, maybe we can do that the next meeting as well, 'cause I don't, what else do we have that we're working on?
When you're between deliberative session and town meeting, there's like, eh?
Yeah, exactly, except for property use fees are a big one.
Yep.
But maybe we could do.
We'll, we'll work on that, sounds good. I'm, we're getting the same questions at home, actually, so. I under, I understand.
Yeah, and I, I actually, I know that at one time, Jennifer talked about, well, should we take off glass, 'cause I guess glass is the hardest one? I also would really like to understand, you know, what kind of cardboard and paper you can recycle, 'cause there's, there's a, I don't always feel like I'm doing the right thing. So, that would be good.
The thick cardboard is really the good stuff that they look for, but one of the things I know that has definitely ratcheted down in, in recent times especially, is the, the whole notion of like, what they call a dirty piece of cardboard, or foodstuffs, things like that.
Pizza bags.
Pizza boxes, like, not the top, but the part that where the pizza's grease is on the box, and they just won't take those because they're considered contaminated, and the facilities would have to sort them out, and so it's hit or miss as far as what, you know, sometimes, obviously, they slip into the, into the recycling stream, but, and, and they do have to take them out, but it would be good to get an update, and also, the single-use plastic bags are not recyclable either, because they go to the recycling facilities, they get stuck in the, in the separators, and so it actually can shut down a facility, so those, a lot of people don't know, don't realize that.
And we have, we have two bills this year dealing with it, the same two we had last year, but we made one a little more clear about what.
What is single-use?
Not your baggies, or not your large shopping bags, but really just single-use grocery bags of a certain thickness.
Yep. Okay, so that would be good. All right, so other than that, I would look for a motion.
I'll move to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.